We call the meeting to order. The first order of business, I would ask anyone who's able to stand with me and join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the third amendment, to the common sense, one nation, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all. Before we start today, I'd just like to ask everyone to just take a couple of seconds, for a moment of silence, for what happened at Marjory Stonem Douglas High School. I would point out to everybody that at last meeting, we had our DIRTT team come to us and have a conversation about our district. I would also point out to everybody that sadly, as we sit here in February, yesterday's events is the 18th shooting in 2018. And so, the moment of silence is not just for the high school in Florida, but probably for everything we've seen, so if you could give me a moment of silence just for a minute. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Hopefully, at some point, we don't have to do those, but unfortunately, it just seems like it's more and more. Next on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Please. Come on down. How are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So, my name's Dan McLaughlin. My name's Dan McLaughlin. I'm not sure if this is the correct forum to bring this up in, but I figured I'd come and ask the school committee anyhow. I have a concern with the bus stop route for the middle school and high school students in my neighborhood. On January 25th, Middleborough granted a special permit to a company called Meddy Mary, which is going to create a medical cannabis dispensary right where my daughter gets on the school bus. So, I'm not sure if that's something that I bring up here, or who I bring this concern up to. It's also the same spot where high school students from both Middleborough and Bristol Plymouth also get the school bus, so.
What I would suggest that you do is have a conversation with the superintendent.
Perfect.
And he can have that conversation with you. That's probably going to be the easiest thing to do. And then, as far as Bristol Plymouth goes, I don't believe we control those routes, but I'm sure the superintendent can give you a name of someone to talk to at Bristol Plymouth.
Yes, but I know the superintendent over there, we can give them a call too, but myself and Kathy Piatek, our business manager, would be glad to sit down with you and look at the logistics, look at the map. What school is your child in?
She's in the Nichols School.
At the Nichols?
Yep.
All right. And perhaps the Nichols School administrator, just to take a look, and whatever's convenient for you. So, if you want to contact the office in the morning, that'd be great.
Perfect.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for coming.
Next up on our agenda, Owen text let me know that he wouldn't be here tonight, so reports from school committee members. Does anyone have anything they'd like to talk about? Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we sit here this evening, there's a game going on, basketball game going on. There's a lot of events still going on here in Middleborough, so take a look at that, the calendar of events on our website, and you can see some of the games and things that are going on, and please grab one. We do have vacation coming up after an early release day tomorrow, so wishing everyone a safe holiday week, everyone, please. Another item, we had a great fundraiser. I say "we," I wasn't involved, I went, participated that way, but the mattress fundraiser was fun. I got to actually, I laid down on a lot of mattresses to try some different things out. I ended up picking up some great pillows that have, my wife says I don't snore as much, which is a great thing, so I got a couple of good pillows. Thanks to Sean Cicilliano, who recommended them, to try them out. So, that was a great fundraiser. Was it seven, over $7,000 raised by Masba?
Amazing.
Almost $8,000. Great, great fundraiser, and thanks to Masba and everyone who participated in raising that money. Just so many great people out here doing things over and above, just being here, but sometimes going over and above to raise those extra dollars to help out. Other events that are coming, you know, it's funny, I was talking to my son, I just want to mention this, spring sports are around the corner. They had their pre-spring event, and then, less than a month away, the spring events, spring sports are coming up, so that's a great thing coming up, so keep your eyes on for that. But, I wanted to touch upon a couple of things, especially those fundraisers.
No, exactly. The superintendent and I went to the fundraiser for the hockey parents at the Elks, and that was very well attended and a great time, we had a blast. I would also point out to everybody that currently, the boys' ice hockey team qualified for the state tournament. The girls' basketball team currently needs two wins this week to qualify for the state tournament. And we've had several members of the track team qualify to participate in states, so the winter season will extend for a few more weeks in Middleborough.
Swinging also.
Swinging also, thank you very much. I didn't want Mr. Cicilliano to get mad at me. Anything else anyone wants to bring up? Hearing none, we will move on. Mr. Catino's mentioned that we will not be at, he would not be here tonight, so I wanted to bring that up. And recognition, Mr. Lynch, we have some recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience, I'd like to invite up to the microphone, if we wouldn't mind, coming on up, Coach Jackie May Beaton, one of our winter track coaches, and one of our students, Abby Wager, who was one of the captains of the team, also a standout cross-country runner, but does the winter track. And I'd like to let you know that this team went undefeated. Myself, I've had three daughters do winter track at Middleborough High School, and they've never gone undefeated, as far as I know. So, congratulations to the team, they did go undefeated, which is great. They do trek up to the Reggie Lewis Center whenever they have meets, it's a, they're long nights, you're coming back at 9:30 at night, many doing homework with your phones, lights, and trying to get that done, usually in sub-zero temperatures outside, so we recognize the extra effort you guys put in, in terms of winter track and the distance you travel, and congratulate you for an undefeated season, champions of the South Shore League for the first time, which is great. And congratulations, we also have Sean Kenny, who was named Coach of the Year for the track team. So, Coach May Beaton, the microphone is yours if you'd like to add anything.
I can just add that both the boys' and girls' indoor track team was named the Social League Sportsmanship Award, so we found that out, so that's also a huge honor, so they didn't just win, they won with class, so that's awesome. And they worked so hard, I'm very proud of them. Abs.
I don't know, we just worked really hard and put all of our effort into every practice, like make sure this was possible, because we really wanted it, we wanted to bring home the banner.
Aggieel's also a twirler, who twirls throughout the year, so in addition to her fall sports and her winter sports and spring sports, she also twirls all year. So, when she's doing cross-country in the fall, she's twirling at the football games on Saturdays and Friday nights, right? So, congratulations, you're very active and well-deserved honor, so congratulations to the track team.
My assumption is that for most of you guys, winter track turns into spring track. When do you usually run meets? And when, I know people can go watch them if they want to, but when, like, for example, basketball games are usually Tuesday and Fridays, is there generally a day that the track meets are held?
Yeah, they're generally for the indoor season, it was Monday nights, so that'll switch for the spring track season, and I don't have the schedule just yet, but I can have Sean post that.
That'd be great, and we'll make sure that, you know, sadly, I don't think a lot of events are as well-attended as people could, and people are more than welcome to stop at the high school and watch any game going on, so I think it would be, anytime we can publicize you guys, we will.
Yeah, they generally, through the week, do you remember what they were last week, or last year?
I think they're mostly Wednesdays.
Mostly Wednesdays, so.
And if you go to the MHS Athletics page.
On the website, and you look up schedules, and you'll find all of the spring schedules there. We have lots of moms and dads who do attend, lots of grandparents who do attend, occasionally some aunts and uncles, and some folks that just like to attend these, but they are open to anyone, so.
And anybody can download the MIA app for their phones, and just pick Middleborough as your favorite, and you can get access, and it'll go right to your calendar too, which is, in some ways, a lot easier.
So, the winning continues, congratulations, thanks very much.
Chair?
In light of the fact that we just had a championship season, undefeated season, is there any way we might be able to get Kathy to look to see if there's any money in the budget for an indoor track? Here in Middleborough? Maybe two?
Working group at New High School, absolutely.
We can wish. Thank you.
Congratulations. Up on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, and members of the audience, I would like to invite Carolyn Lyons down to the microphone. Carolyn Lyons, as you know, is our Pupil Personnel Services Director. She's somebody who's been in this position now for a couple of years, and a year and a half anyways, almost two. We welcome her to the mic. As we talked about the last week, we talked about sort of the, sort of the basics of what we were doing with the DIRTT team here, and a couple other folks talking about the basics, and this is more about sort of compliance, I guess, if you will. And there are several, obviously, more than several laws, as Carolyn well knows, there are books and books of laws that govern what she does, and we've just been sort of taken, we had a hard look by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, and looking at our compliance with regard to special ed, ELL, and civil rights. So, she's here to comment on some manuals that have been developed in her tenure, and also talk about, a little bit about some of the feedback that we've received from the state. Carolyn Lyons.
Thank you. Okay, so, last time I was here, I told you guys that the PPS department was hard at work, and you could expect a couple of manuals from us. So, tonight, I'm presenting three. Two of these were completed over the summer of 2017. I'm going to start with this one, which is a Special Education Procedure Manual. This is designed to be a live document that all staff within the district can use. Sorry, I'm just going to toggle down. I want to show you the table of contents. This is about 265 pages long, so I'm not going to go through every single thing, because I think it's probably more than you need. This manual was created using a prototype that we had in the district that was several years old, and it was only in paper format, and it hadn't been updated in a long time. So, we used it bare bones, and when I say "we," I mean all of the special ed coordinators and myself. We took a look at all the procedures we had in place, we discussed them as a group, we talked about areas we wanted to improve, and we selected the Google Forms format, so that, for starters, it could be updated instantaneously, and for another, it could be shared out internally, virtually paperless. With a manual this size, the last thing I wanted was to create, you know, 58 binders that are all 300 pages in length. So, as you can see, it starts with a discussion about acronyms and terms. If you've ever been to a special education meeting or process, you know that we all talk in code, so the manual starts with kind of debunking some of that code, and then walks you through the process, starting with referral, assessments, responsibilities for staff here in the district, we call them special education contact person, and then it moves into how, participation in team meetings, why am I having trouble toggling this? Participation in state testing, excuse me, that's the MCAS assessment. It moves into the team process, because, as I've talked to you before, I have a pretty specific vision for how team meetings should run here in the district, and I wanted all of our staff trained with that philosophy and vision of inclusion and parents as partners. So, that team process is designed to assist either a first-year teacher or a veteran teacher, so that there's some uniformity in your experience, whether you're at the early childhood center or the high school. It then goes through the IEP, and this is where it gets very technical, timelines, paperwork, process, which can get very confusing. After you develop any IEP, you discuss placement, so it talks about our placement, which includes related services and vocational services, out of district placements and associated procedures. Transition, meaning how we prepare our students for post-secondary education and adulthood, starting at age 14. It includes the Massachusetts model, what we do and at different ages, and then linkages to state agencies, that's what that Chapter 688 referral means, because for special education students, there is a possibility of extension of state-driven assistance upon the age of 16, and that's through the 688 referral. We talk about progress reports, which not only includes process, but directions ultimately on how to navigate that within our electronic system. Student discipline and all the associated procedures. Dispute resolution, rejected IEPs and termination, independent evaluations, and those associated procedures. Observations that occur, you know, at any time a parent requests, or any time a team feels it's appropriate. Extended school year students, how we tackle special education files, because there's actually regulations governing how our files are held and maintained. New students, whether they are transfer, or perhaps worked with us before and back again. And then some information about specific learning disability, the state has very specific rules about that particular disability. Home, oops, home services, physical restraint, and then I included a section just on law, that's the DESE Regulations and Process. There are advisories in there, legal guidance, helpful tips. I designed that section for new educators, because when you, you know, when you're in school becoming a teacher, you have no idea the legal magnitude that awaits for you the second you walk into a classroom. And then lastly, a little bit about the PPS department and the coordinators, identifying who we are, how you can reach us, our phone numbers, our email addresses, that sort of thing. So, that's what you'll find in this manual. The vision for this manual is that it'll be updated every summer. And as Superintendent Lynch has told you before, I'm involved in a Special Education Leadership Institute this year. One of my assignments was to, which I didn't know I had at the time that I accepted it, but one of the assignments was to create a manual or update the one in your district. So, this manual is actually being reviewed by my mentor, so I'll get even greater feedback from an outside source. My mentor is a previous special ed director and assistant superintendent with decades of service, so I'm confident that we'll be able to make improvements every year, and because it's electronic, every time it's updated, I can send out an email to staff, letting them know, and calling their attention to new chapters. So, that's this manual. Any questions on this manual before I move on to the next?
Does this apply to all staff, or just special educators in the district?
This is actually available for all staff. I wanted to make sure, and there are sections particularly about team process, I wanted to make sure if you were a science teacher in the district, that you would have some expectation of what was expected of you when you go to a meeting. So, I designed different chapters, and we used this heavily in our preparation for the Coordinated Program Review as well. So, it's available to all staff. Sure?
When you mentioned especially new staff, can you talk a little bit about what you do in professional development, and getting people ready for an IEP and things like that?
Sure. Well, so for new staff, I worked in direct conjunction with Dr. Melanie Gates with the Start Strong program. So, the staff was here over several days, three days, and she and I worked together to develop an entire program for just special education. That ranged from Aspen, how to use our electronic platform, to team process, to paperwork. And then we divided that into sections, so I, we, the PPS department, and that included the coordinators, we split the group and had opportunities to just train special education teachers and related service providers, and then just general educations, you know, teachers, which was great, because we got to tailor the message. Last year, I did a three-part series, 2016, but over this fall, Dr. Gates kind of brought this into focus through the new process. Now, because of the Coordinated Program Review, I was able to take close to 35 different members of the community, spanning special ed, gen ed, administration, and related service, and I hand-trained them along with the coordinators in a 12-hour series to prepare for our Coordinated Program Review. So, we heavily relied on the information in this manual and elsewhere as well. So, did that answer your question about how we train new staff? Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so I'm going to move into the 504 manual. Now, the 504 manual really didn't exist, so this was something that took a little bit more, a little bit more creation. I met with the 504 coordinators building-based, I am the district-wide 504 coordinator for our district, and I enrolled this this fall after giving a training on the entire manual. This one is much smaller, it's closer to 35 pages maybe. But once again, I started with language and definitions, the actual law of Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and the accompanying amendments in 2008. I included resources. I called this a procedure and resource guide, because it was my understanding and my feeling that our 504 coordinators would benefit from additional resources. Where could they read? So, this, the federal government releases a lot of resource guides that I thought would be very helpful. One is the Parent and Educator Resource Guide. This is something I like to give out to families, and I like our staff to know about it too. Specifically, students with ADHD, they have an entirely separate sort of manual for that purpose, so I include that, I included that in this, in this manual. Our Notice of Nondiscrimination, and then our procedural guidelines for Section 504, which kind of walks you through the same process of special education identification and referral, the plan of accommodations and/or services, and then review of student progress annually. Procedural safeguards, those are rights that attach to a family during the process, staff responsibilities, and then I spelled out how everything works in terms of an actual process in this Section 504 process section. I also gave additional sections here, there's a form section that Dr. Gates was instrumental in helping me with, so that, one of the other things I realized is that through Aspen, you can draft a 504 plan, but there wasn't a lot outside of that. So, I, along with Dr. Gates, we came up with these forms that we could use as a district, so that no matter what you were doing, if you were making an invite, we modeled it just after, it was modeled completely after special education. But you really don't want to use special education paperwork for a 504 process, because 504 students are general education students. So, by making that kind of line of demarcation, we created a system to, again, have uniform procedure, uniform paperwork, and hopefully, a better explanation for families as they navigate this process. So, that's the 504 manual. Any questions on that? Okay, so I'm going to move into the Homeless and Foster Care Manual and Resource Guide. There have, there's been a lot of change in the law on homelessness, and particularly foster care, in the last two years. I'm now doing annual training on homelessness and foster care. Last year, I ran two different trainings, one targeted at elementary, one targeted at secondary. This year, I've run trainings with administration through administrative PD that the PPS, well, I should probably mention that, the PPS department over the summer also designed administrative PD offerings for the coming year. This usually occurs on a Thursday evening, such as today, when school committee's going to meet. And so, we solicited topics from all of the administrators, and then through in-house efforts, we've been able to put a menu of professional development offerings on the table. This was one of them. Social thinking has been a topic, we've talked about, geez, I'm blanking on some of the topics, but there's been quite a few topics that we've covered already this year, and there's more to come. So, in any event, the homeless, the homeless and foster care worlds have now been divided, if you notice, both Dr. Gates and I are listed on here, because the state is now asking for a homeless liaison and a foster care point of contact. And after talking with my superintendent, it, we concluded that it was important for it to not be the same role, there are actually different functions, and we thought it would keep the lines a little clearer. So, Dr. Gates has been working with me closely on this. We log the students who are eligible for either homeless educational services and/or foster care through a Massachusetts State Portal. It's a confidential process, there are not, there's nothing personally identifiable here within the district, but we do have to report these, this information to the state, and it's certified at the end of the year. So, again, we're going through language and definitions, and I started with homeless in this manual, and we ended with foster care. Complete list of resources for all educators, this is again designed for any employee of the district, so if someone's in front of you and you're learning, as often is the case, that a family has a hardship, you're able to pull up resources right there on the spot. You don't have to wait for an administrator, you don't have to go down the hall, you don't have to find a form, you can pull this up right through your email and offer a family a whole host of services. Again, our statement of nondiscrimination, and then process. A lot of this is new, because we really haven't, we haven't had, this process grows each year, and because now legally, the world is different for foster care and homeless, we had to create process. Who does it communicate, who does it get communicated to? Who identifies? Who enrolls in the portal? And then what are we doing about transportation? Because that's the major issue. And it used to be that students who were, you know, awaiting foster care came under the umbrella of homelessness. Now, the way the state treats that is that essentially, all of the protections and entitlements that attach to homeless students now attach to students who are in foster care, which is basically any time a student is in 24-hour care away from their parent as a result of state agency involvement. As you can imagine, that has major financial implications for any LEA. So, it's important that we know what we're talking about, it's important that we have two identified parties, and it's very helpful that Dr. Gates is right next door, because it lends itself for us to collaborate, as we often do, on how to navigate these waters. So, this manual ends with contacts and, again, forms for the district's use. It's important that everyone's using the same form, using the same terms, and has a clear understanding of how to proceed. So, we worked on this together, it's absolutely a co-authored manual, and like the other two, my intention is for these manuals to be updated each summer. That's usually going to be the optimal time, when there's a little bit more time in the schedule, to look critically at this, and if process is not working the way we like, or if it needs to be tweaked, then we have the opportunity to talk about it with other admin and, and anyone else for that matter, but to improve it. So, these are the three manuals. Any questions on this particular manual?
I would just point out to people, just so everyone knows, the reason why foster care got put with the homeless population is because the state constantly got in trouble from the federal government over a number of placements. And so, in Massachusetts, when we place a child into foster care, what we normally do is place a child immediately someplace for the night, and then assess what's the best for that child, and make a placement after that that makes sense for that child to go to. The problem lies in that immediately registers as two placements for a child. The same applies to, especially at night, where I work, if we have to, if I have to put a child in a foster home immediately, just to get him out of a bad situation, and then I got to go to court the next morning, oh, and we have to figure it out, you could have three placements right away before you find a placement for them to stay for long-term. The feds frown on that, and so one of the reasons that they, one of the things that they did was they said, okay, we would treat foster kids the same way we would treat homeless kids, and allow them the same opportunities, and that was to offset some problems that the federal government was having. So, I'll just bring that up.
Right, I mean, the vision, the theory behind both of these provisions involves educational stabilization, that we know, studies show, we have all the evidence that reflects that, when students are either homeless, or food insecure, or entering into foster care placements, the more their educational placements change, the lower the student achieves across the board, in all areas, all functioning for child development. So, the premise is that we are to maintain what's known as their school of origin, the school they last attended, in the community where they know, regardless of what's going on in their life. So, you know, it's a, it's an understandable purpose, it's absolutely got some research and science behind it, and, you know, we're tackling that every day.
Carolyn, you mentioned the financial impact this has on a local education agency or an LEA. What are those impacts do you see, and how are we already feeling them now?
The major, the major impact is in transportation. In actual education, there isn't necessarily increased cost unless the child is out of district for a particular purpose, but there isn't per se an additional per-head cost. It's transportation. If a child is either homeless, or doubled up, or in a foster care placement, that placement may very well be in Plymouth, or Bellingham, or Boston. I mean, there's actually a one-hour limit, but it's very difficult to actually hit the one-hour limit. Boston might hit it. But many communities that are not near Middleborough would be within a one-hour radius, which means unless our transportation can handle it, which very often it can't because of the distances, we have to contract out for that transportation. Those runs can range, a per-day cost anywhere from 100 to, I've seen upwards of $380 a day. So, as you, if you can imagine, maintaining a student's school of origin over 180 school days is very significant. One of the newest changes is that changes is that in the year that you become homeless, it's always been that if I'm homeless today and I am homed tomorrow in another community, it had been that I was no longer homeless, and if that other community was not Middleborough, I needed to re-enroll. Because the studies show that once you are touched by homelessness, it can become a cycle where getting rehomed doesn't guarantee that new status, they've now extended it through the end of the school year. So, if I'm homeless today, but I become homed tomorrow in Bellingham, I still have the right to come to Middleborough to finish out the year to maintain that educational stability. So, that's an additional cost that previously, if the student was here and then rehomed, we would have made that move and cut off the funding for the rest of the school year. Now, that's not happening. The transportation cost cannot be understated enough because now it's been imputed to foster care. When they first released this guidance last October, it was October of 2016, they were telling us that DCF would help when these kids are placed in a foster care process, that DCF would shoulder the burden. And the experience that we've had has been quite the opposite. Rather, DCF will call and say, here's a child in foster care. You're going to need to transport them. As you can imagine, this created a lot of angst between DCF and LEAs across the state of Massachusetts. This fall, Dr. Gates and I went to a training where the state basically said, I'm sorry, LEAs, but if DCF is telling you they don't have funding, then you're going to be the only one that can provide it. To that end, you can use your Title I funds if you so choose, or you can figure it out throughout your own budget process. As you can imagine, this left everybody feeling a little insecure because that's really not what Title I was intended to accomplish. So, I've had many discussions with Central Office, Superintendent Business Office about how we're going to navigate that. But already, we've seen significant increases in foster care transportation because before this year, it wasn't our responsibility to fund it. And because the provision now allows DCF to ultimately show up and say, we don't have funding, there's no mechanism to force them. DESE has said they're looking into a way to get us reimbursement, but there's nothing concrete yet. So, that's...
And then one of those, too, is, so, for example, DCF at end of, when DCF starts the fiscal year, they start the fiscal year with essentially an overabundance, if you will, of money to go to foster homes. And then, at the end of the fiscal year, every fiscal year for the past five, they've generally had about $15 million in reserves that have been there because they don't place kids in the foster homes. They needed, you know, they need to look at a placement for all the kids they have in custody and set it up that way, but at the end, you're not going to spend as much. And so, I know there's a big push right now to say, when that $15 million is available, this is one area in which the $15 million should be spread out, and it should go by, the sad part is it goes more towards Western Mass primarily because it's such a huge, much bigger geographic area. If you think about, DCF's allowed to place generally, unless they get a waiver, in any area that touches another office. So, for example, we're covered by the Plymouth Office, and the Plymouth Office only runs to Taunton, and so, that's good, except it runs to Pittown and it runs to Weymouth. So, it's a, you know, it's a much wider audience those ways, but not so much this way. So, that's helpful.
Since we're talking about financial implications, I do want to add one more thing. And this is pertaining to both, but specifically homeless. I think the mandate is much clearer for students that are touched by homelessness. There is also an obligation for LEAs to offer students to fully participate in their high school, middle school, elementary school community. So, that would include all sporting events, all extracurricular events, all evening events, and it can include the families as well. So, as you can imagine, you know how many events are happening at all of our buildings on any given day. For a student who is homeless, they're entitled, and we are really obligated to figure out transportation for these children and their families to attend these events. And that really has the capacity to really drive up expenditure, even for one child over the course of several months. So, it's something to just, you know, know, and certainly, this is all spelled out in this manual. So, and this is a short manual. It's only about 17 pages. So, feel free to kind of dig in and take a look at it because it's new.
One of the things I've always, always said is, the best way to find unfunded mandates is just look in a school district. This being a new one, I mean, myself personally, I don't think we should bear the brunt of any of these unfunded mandates. I know we have to do it, but here's how an unfunded mandate works. By law, if we willingly accept it, and that's the words, willingly accept on a proposition two and a half, if we willingly accept to do this, which I'm not, and I'd make a motion tonight to do that, to not willingly accept this mandate that we're now being presented with, that I didn't realize until just now, that this new mandate, and then we send a letter accordingly to the state auditor, Ms. Suzanne Bump, telling her, we're not going to stand for this, and we're going to start billing whoever sends it, whoever's, we start billing these people. Because at $300 a day, or $380, or $120 for transportation, when this starts to add up, it really starts to add up, and to tell us to use Title I funds is inappropriate. The state really, I mean, that's legislation at this point. Regulation, legislation doesn't work for me. I hate using funds that are specifically to be used for one thing for something else. In fact, I almost consider it illegal, but these unfunded mandates have to stop. I've made these motions before of not willingly accepting these mandates, and we should be taking a more proactive role. And if the state wants to force it, and I don't just, I don't say we don't do it. We have to do it, and I understand for the good of the children, but it could add up to considerable amounts. I mean, our McKinney-Vento budget used to be at $120,000 a year, and we used to use it. I don't know how much we, I haven't looked at it recently, how much we've used, but I think there's something there that we need to get the state auditor to review it, let the state auditor make a decision, and if the state auditor says no mas, the state may come up with another way of handling the situation or funding it. I've always said, special education is not fully funded, and I've argued with the governor personally over this, and I will argue with him again next time I see him about it because he doesn't understand the full funding of special education is paying all the bills, not 75 cents on the dollar after everything over $43,000 or whatever it is. And I'll get off my horse for a second because I just, it just angers me when I hear there's another piece, because I would be, if a foster child's redistricted and it costs us money, I'd send a bill to DCF, send it to them. If they don't pay it, fine, but at least we got to bill them. Because if we don't bill them, then we'll never get reimbursed. And if they don't pay it, at some point, we send the bills to, once again, the state auditor and say, they're not, they're requiring us to do it. We didn't accept it. Here are the bills. Pay it. And they'll either decide to fund it or not fund it or change the law, which is what they should do. To just give us a regulation or just a mandate, something without law is just wrong. You have to have a funding source.
I also think, Brian, that it's probably, in my mind, a better way to do it would be to look at the end of the year as to what's unpaid, and then have a conversation with our delegation to say, these are actual dollars that we can show you that are, we're not being paid for, that, you know, we're supposed to be reimbursed for. Now, they're telling us, you're stuck with it if they can't pay it, but it's ridiculous to me that, you know, the governor is, the governor's not, I'm not picking on the governor. The governor's not adding more money to DCF in this budget process to cover what we all know is going to be additional foster care placements. And so, it's, you're absolutely right, which is it's just blown off. But I think, to your point, that may, we're going to have that discussion at the budget hearing because we're raising the transportation money specifically for this reason. So, that may be where we have a bigger discussion.
And I will, Mr. Chair, I will probably say something during the budget process again and might even put a motion at that point. Because my concern is, if you, if we budget it and we approve a budget, the moment we have approved that budget, we have willingly accepted, and that is the definition of, it removes the unfunded mandate piece out of it. The moment you willingly accept something, and that's what the state says, if you go to park testing, like we did two years ago, year and a half ago, whatever it was now, it's been so long, when we did that and we made that change, we willingly accepted all expenses going along with that. So, to send a bill to the state for whatever we had, every expense, it was not going to come to us. We had to not willingly accept. You can do it and say, I'm not willingly accepting, and I've made these motions in the past. And that's what, during the budget process, I probably will have a piece in there because we have to make sure, we have, because the moment, they'll say, well, you budgeted it. You approved it. You accepted it.
I don't disagree. I was just pointing out that to me, that would...
Yeah. No, I, when I saw that, I saw that in the budget, so. But thank you. I'll get off my horse.
So, do you want to hear a little bit of good news, then?
Sure.
Okay. So, I can, I can tell you about, and I will preface this by saying, these are just preliminary results. So, the coordinated program review process has all but come to an end. The stage that we're at right now is that we've received a draft report. And when you received, when you get a draft report, you have 10 days in which to respond. We're in that window right now, and that gives us an opportunity. If we feel that there was an error or something included that shouldn't have been, they can kind of reconsider before our final report is due. So, as I told you last time, the self-assessment process is where it all begins. That started in January of 2017, and it went through May, five-month process of really introspectively looking at all three areas, special education, civil rights, and English learner education. The state came back. We had orientation, and then they sent two investigators on November 1st to come and look at the special education files. They were with me all day in the pupil personnel services office, reviewing records, taking notes, filing reports, and they didn't come back again until December. And in December, they conducted building tours of four out of our five buildings. They tour at each level. So, they didn't have to tour both elementary buildings because it's the same level. And then they interviewed some roughly 25 to 30 staff, administration, teachers, related service providers, counselors, one-on-one interviews, and that spanned for three days, four days, three days, December 4th through December 7th, and our record officially closed on Friday, December 8th. So, preliminarily, these are the results. I will come back and tell you about the final report, which will be public and posted. So, I'll be sure to report out again. But as it stands right now, there were no areas of noncompliance for special education out of roughly 59 indicators. So, I'm extremely proud of this team, of this district, and I think it's extremely exemplary of what you will find here in the Special Education Department. In the area of civil rights, there was one area out of, I would say closer to 30, 30 indicators in civil rights. And I'm in the process of having a comment about the area. And then the last area is English learner education. This is an area we have been cited in upwards of eight, nine, 10 areas in previous years. There were four areas this year, and I believe that may decrease. We'll have to see in this marking period, in this, you know, draft period. But those are the preliminary results. What I can tell you with ELE is that there continue to be, some of the areas of citation are areas that we've been cited on before. And that looks at the development of curriculum for ELE, which is something that low-incidence districts like us frequently struggle with. We don't have hundreds of students in this category, so it can be hard to build curriculum. That's one area. Licensorship of teachers with the SEI endorsement. And again, it's a function of low incidence, but also a call to action. And also, program evaluation. And this gets into the fact that, you know, to date, we have one individual who works in this avenue, and we've talked about this, you know, through the budget process, and we've talked about this as a leadership team for a couple of years, that one person is probably not enough to, as heroic as his efforts are, to cover the needs for this district, which is on an uptick. I mean, it's not a massive uptick, but definitely increasing enrollment numbers. We did kind of reveal some very positive factors of our ELE, and I hadn't realized this, but that all of our ELE students have gone on to go to college here in Middleborough. And when you look at whether or not, one of the areas they look at is, are we overly citing ELE students as special education? Are we improperly coding them as special education because they're learning the English language? And our rate for ELE is actually lower than the state average. So, we're not doing that either, which is wonderful. So, I think it's a moment to kind of reflect and give credit where credit's due to the departments involved. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Your leadership.
I appreciate it. Carolyn, you made this, you know, you've expressed to us, especially at the Budget Subcommittee, about looking at different things and looking at pieces in different ways. And so, from that perspective, we really appreciate your openness to try and find, and understanding that everything can't come with, we need more, we need more, we need more without, okay, let's try to, let's try to look at things differently and see what we can do in a different way rather than just add, add, add. So, I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That concludes my formal report. I would, however, like to invite Dr. Melanie Gates down to the table for a moment to talk about some news that was received this week. We didn't know which way the news would go, and it was a grant that she applied for, an exciting grant, which she's mentioned it here before, with regard to the Program of Studies. But she has some news to share. It was actually a press release done. It went out in the Gazette today, if you had a chance to see it. But, Dr. Gates, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch. Thank you, school committee members. It's with tremendous excitement that we publicly share that Middleborough High School has earned two grants from Project Lead the Way in order to begin an engineering pathway and a biomedical science pathway as presented in the Program of Studies. I guess we can remove that grant pending piece in the Program of Studies now because this is going to happen, and we're going to kick it off for the 2018-2019 school year. It's a two-year grant worth a total of $70,000, where the money will be primarily used to buy core resources for the program. It's truly exciting because I think it's the type of curriculum and experience that our kids need and want, and I think it's what we, the shift, it's representing the shifts that we'll be making throughout our curriculum as we prepare to enter into our 21st century learning facility with our new high school. So, I'm really excited to share that news with you all, and there's been a great buzz. I've gotten emails from parents already that, you know, seventh-grade parent who's excited that their child is going to be able to enroll in that program. We've got kids that are wanting to take and participate in both programs, but the academic rigor of these programs, I would, I would think it would be hard to maintain two of these pathways plus a full course load of other academics. So, it's just exciting, and I think it's a great opportunity for our kids. The teachers that will be participating in the training for these courses are so excited. You know, for teachers, we look forward to the summertime as a time to relax and rejuvenate for the coming school year. But I've got three teachers that are chomping at the bit to go away for two weeks to learn about this curriculum and prepare to, you know, implement it in the coming school year. So, we're really excited for our kids, really excited for the staff, and we're really thankful that Project Lead the Way was able to select us for this competitive, for these competitive grants.
That's fantastic. Thank you for your hard work. You really worked hard to get this done for us, and I can't say how much we thank you now.
I fully intend on applying for their extension grants in the future. Now that we've got our foot in the door, it opens up the opportunity to apply for additional funding. There's also other programming within Project Lead the Way that I think the district could benefit from. The only other programming at the high school that we could take advantage of is a computer science pathway, which we're interested in. But they also have programming for the middle and high school as well, and all STEM-focused, which, when you look at the trajectory of careers in the future, most of them have a heavy STEM influence. So, if we want to prepare our students for the jobs of the future, that's some of the direction we need to go in.
And also, I just want to say one thing because I think it's important. You know, there's lots of kids, especially at the high school, who think they want to go into a field, but we can't offer them sort of what that's going to look like. And so, you know, you get a lot of kids who start off in school thinking, I'm going to, at college, I think I'm going to do this, and say, I don't like that because I've never had that experience. This gives them an experience to see, and also, it also gives those kids experience who aren't quite sure, and now can say, well, I like that. I like that, what you're doing, and maybe I'll look to that as a career. So, I think that's just as important, too.
And that's really a big focus with the Project Lead the Way programming, particularly at the high school level. It's really career-oriented. When, a small contingent from the high school, myself, Kurt Wrench, who's our Science and Technology Department head, we were able to visit Plymouth South and Plymouth North. They've been a biomedical science district for three years now, and we were able to see the program in action. And just, the applications within the classroom are all grounded in a real-world experience. grounded in a real-world experience. Whether you're approaching a crime scene as a forensic investigator to determine why someone passed away, or in Plymouth, they have the opportunity to go across the street to Beth Israel Deaconess, and their students were able to sit on, I guess what they call a cancer board, where they're hearing a case that, to discuss how we're going to treat a patient who is diagnosed with cancer, and they were actually able to view that discussion. They also were able to go into the emergency room and, and see what, what that's like. You know, we don't have that facility across the street from our high school, but now that we know we're part of this program, it's going to be incumbent upon me to start to find some of those partnerships, so that we can give our kids that opportunity, similar to Plymouth. But, the whole program's exciting, the focus on the careers is definitely there, and I think any student who has a potential interest in engineering, biomedical science, and not just biomedical science within itself, but allied health sciences, medicine, anything related to the life sciences, I think it would be a great program for kids to experience, because I think it will better inform them, is this a pathway that I could see myself spending my career within?
I'm very excited, as an engineer, I'm excited to see more engineering-focused specifically, so students will know whether or not they really want to continue in it, or that they do want to continue in it. How many slots are going to be available for these programs?
It's a, it's a four-year pathway. We'll start out with the two courses, we'll roll out one course each year, because we're developing a cohort model. So, we're hoping our incoming freshmen, which, from the initial tallies I saw from course requests, I think we're going to fully satisfy the 48 seats that we would have available in each pathway. So, we're offering two sections of the Introduction to Engineering Design and two sections of Principles of Biomedical Science at an honors and at a college prep level. Really, it probably should just be honors across the board, because from what I've seen from the curriculum, it really is at that level. But, we decided to differentiate it in order to, you know, encourage students that may not have the confidence yet to, to take an honors class, but they're interested, and show them that they can do it, because the year three and four courses are only offered at the honors level. But, we have 48 seats that we plan on filling, and from what I see, we've got robust numbers that show that we are filling those seats indeed. So, it'll be two sections in year one and year two, and one section of the year three and four courses.
Great, you have a question?
Through you. Looking at the program of studies, I was impressed when Mr. Brandon came down and showed her, it was my first look at it, being my first year on the board. But, programs like this not only are trending in education, but the way they develop people's skills. And these kids, whether they choose to follow that path or not, are going to get a measurable amount of skills, working with a cohort, and just do great things. So, it's a wonderful thing for Middleborough, and thank you for doing this.
Dr. Gates, before you. This co-mingling with our AP offerings currently at the high school.
I think it adds to it. I think, but, well, I know, by joining Project Lead the Way, it opens up the opportunity for the students to earn, I forget the correct name, naming for this, but it's essentially almost like a certificate of distinction, where if the students take three courses, so if, if we focus on the biomedical science pathway, the students would have to take a minimum of one biomedical science and either AP chemistry or AP biology, and then one additional biomedical science or one additional AP. And if students earn qualifying scores on the AP exam, as well as demonstrating proficiency on the required end-of-course exam, then students get this additional endorsement that I think further differentiates them from other students, because not every school has this program. I believe in the press release, it stated that there's only 74 schools in all of Massachusetts that are proud of Project Lead the Way, and that's inclusive of elementary, middle, and high school. So, it's another feather in Middleborough High School's cap. We're part of an elite group with our AP Capstone, and we're now part of an elite group with Project Lead the Way. And when I first became familiar with Project Lead the Way, probably back in 2008, they, they were partnered with Mass Insight, which is the parent group of Massachusetts Math and Science Initiative, and they were trying to get people to do the AP work and Project Lead the Way. So, there's a tremendous amount of synergy between the two, and I, I think they will support one another and better prepare our kids for advanced placement, and I think also better prepare our students for Biology MCAS if they're in biomed science in that freshman year. So, it's, there's so many wins with this. At the end of the day, it's a win for our kids. That's what's important.
And Dr. Gates, one other thing, too. If people are watching this at home and maybe work for a place in Middleborough where this would be, they can call you and have a conversation, because instead of an emergency room, we have an urgent care facility. You know, we have lots of engineering places in and around town that do a wide variety of things, and so if people want to get involved with this, they can call you and have a conversation, correct?
Absolutely, and we'll be in need of forming some of those partnerships, not just for the opportunity for our kids to, to go on the field trip, but also because in the fourth year, it's a Capstone course, so there'll be a requirement for them to men, have a mentor from a related field. So, we certainly would welcome community members or business members within Middleborough related to engineering and biomedical science to certainly reach out, even if it's just for them to come in and speak to our students to further inspire them to pursue these careers. It all, it all helps support our students at the end of the day.
We have a good percentage right now of students who are graduating, going on to engineering schools, and, and that's a plus for us, but I think the number will just increase as we move on through this.
And we should also point out that we also have scholarship opportunities for kids just related in the engineering field, and so when they graduate at the end, if they're going into an engineering college or going into engineering courses, they're eligible for certain scholarships that we currently have.
Yes, and, you know, particularly for women who tend to be the underrepresented gender in the STEM fields, there's the Society of Women Engineers that is a phenomenal group that, I know they have tremendous support and scholarship opportunities for young women who are pursuing engineering. But, yeah, there's certainly a tremendous amount of potential for scholarships, and I think it, I think it just makes you stand out, too, for participating in such a program that it will, I, I could see it enticing colleges to give you an academic scholarship just because they see the rigor of the coursework that you're completing. Because with Project Lead the Way, it's not us developing a curriculum to fit their standards, it's their curriculum, and we're expected to follow it.
All right, you're all set, sir. Adam, we have to move on to MSBA.
Yeah, we'll go through the next couple. Pretty quickly, we've had meetings about the high school. I know Brian had mentioned at the last meeting, when he saw material, especially around the gym and some of the open complexes, we, we've moved forward to, we're starting to work on the auditorium and the, and some of the outside areas.
Some more exterior elevations, correct.
And so, it was, it, it's continuing. We also have made everyone aware that when, right after we do the sort of submission, we will have, we were going to have a public meeting, so people can see what we submitted and how, how it looks, and as Brian said, you know, I don't mean it this way, but they do a really nice mock-up on, on the things, in some ways looks cartoonish, but I don't mean it that, in a negative sense. And when you look at it and see what it looks like, it really becomes overwhelming at times, and it's amazing, isn't it, Brett?
I think the word was wicked awesome. The renderings, which are online, if you go to MHSbuildingproject.com, the, the renderings are actually online, and, and when I say they're awesome, I think, I think I almost beat Paul to a tear, because it was, we're talking about it, we're so excited about it. As I said, they took what we sat down a year and a half ago, and, which was a dream, to make things happen, and I thought, never in a million years would they reach out to that one little spot where I was talking about those collaborative spaces, real nooks and crannies, we kept calling them nooks and crannies, and they did it. And, and just when the rendering, and they're still polishing it up, and it just, I get excited about it, because that's that first one, and then the gym, and now they're working, and they're working in the upstairs near the, what is, used to be a library, now it's the media center, it's still a, a workspace for, for students. And every time we see more information and more pieces of this, they're making these things come to fruition, and it's just awesome. It's just awesome, and exciting, if you can't tell.
Any other questions about that?
Then I'll move on to Chair, we entertain a motion for consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening. Sorry, a second. Second. Discussion. Hearing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The last two things I had on the, on the, this regular meeting agenda was so people know, the Summit on Power for the Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Association of Superintendents is going to be held on March 9th, 2018. If people are interested, let us know. I believe I am going to that. And then the Day on the Hill is April 25th, 2018. If people are interested in going there, Superintendent and I went last time, and I believe we're going to go again if all goes to plan. But, that being said, any other questions before I move on to the budget here? Hearing then.
Can we take two minutes so we can reorganize?
Yep, we're going to take two minutes for a brief agenda, then when we reconvene, I will open the budget hearing, okay? Thank you. Two-minute recess. Thank you very much.
I will reconvene the school committee meeting, and it being past 8 o'clock, I will call to order the public hearing on, on the Middleborough School Committee's budget. I would point out to everybody that we have complied with our requirement that we post a legal notice in the newspaper. We posted it in the Middleborough Gazette, and that was within the, we're supposed to do that two weeks, one week prior, and then I believe that was two weeks prior, so we met the requirement. So, if no one objects, I'm going to turn it over to Kathy and Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience. Tonight, we're here to present the fiscal year 19 budget proposal to the school committee for your action this evening, and we start with a, a number of different slides, and we start with our first slide, which was the, the new branding for the school system, and that is the, hopefully the magnet you see around in a lot of cars with the big orange M, which says, "Every student, every classroom, every day." And we move on to the mission, the new mission of the Middleborough Public Schools, as articulated in that strategy for continuous district improvement, and that is to foster a culture of excellence within every student, in every classroom, every day. And the vision statement, "Students of the Middleborough Public Schools, with the support of a dedicated community, will think critically, appreciate diversity, demonstrate innovation, value reflection, and develop a growth mindset as active members of our larger community to learn, grow, and finish strong."
This is a calendar of our budget process, how we go about building the budget. In the fall, we get requests from the administrators of what they see their buildings need for the following year. We meet with the Budget Subcommittee, they go through all the requests, they justify their needs, and then in here, we bring it here to the full school committee. This year, we did it a little differently. We didn't make any recommendations for new positions that administrators wanted, because we wanted to wait to see through the annual town meeting, and if we receive any notices of retirement, we will have savings, because we feel it's important to address the requests of the administrators, but we want it to be budget-neutral. So, our calendar will go down past the annual town meeting, we will continue to meet and make recommendations.
We will certainly let you know those as we move along.
Sure. These are the members of the Budget Subcommittee. Mr. Young is the chair, Mr. Stevens is the vice chair, Mr. Lynch and myself participate in the process. We begin by building our budget through the Department of Ed Chart of Accounts, the DESE. It's built this way with the numbers, so that at the end of the year, when we file our final report, the department is able to pull all of the data from all the schools and compare them for you on the webpage, so that everyone across the district is following the same chart of accounts. So, the 1,000 is for administration, things outside of the classroom, the business office, legal services, but necessary parts of the school department. 2,000 are the, anything that touches the student inside of the classroom, teachers, administrators, substitutes, professional development, supplies, materials, and technology. The 3,000 is also part, an important part of the day, where you have your nurses, student activities, athletics, and security. 4,000 is your buildings and grounds, all of your maintenance salaries, utilities, custodial supplies and equipment, anything that keeps the buildings up and running. 5,000 is for sick leave buyback. We budget $70,000 in this account. All of our contracts have a sunset clause in it, so that anyone hired after 2009 is not eligible for this, but there are still several members of the units that are entitled to a buyback for this sick leave when they retire. 7,000, we purchase minivans out of our operating budget. We allocate us $25,000 for this. If we need a bigger bus, we ask the town through the capital planning for that, but the regular minivans that you will see around town, we actually purchase through our operating budget. 9,000 is for tuition of students who attend either the Norfolk or the Bristol-Aggie School, that comes out of our operating budget, and any student who attends an out-of-district school.
And next, we move to the, back to the District Strategic Improvement Plan, which is a real budget driver, especially this year with the, the new development of this plan. And we have our, our, sort of our pie divided by three here, which are our three large group of standards that we're looking at our goals to accomplish and establish cultures. One is culture of innovation and achievement, one is culture of excellence, and one is culture of well-being. These are three big rocks that we want to move in this district, that we felt as a group of administrators, and it was vetted through school committee and vetted through faculty, that these were our areas that we really wanted to move along. First one, culture of well-being, and Kathy will talk a little bit about that.
To kick off the, the school year, we were able to hold an employee health and wellness fair that came under that big rock of well-being for staff. We were able to bring in local businesses and make the gym available, set up tables, so that all the staff could spend the, the whole morning, meeting with vendors and catching up with friends, but also getting life into perspective before they kicked off the school year. We set up the gym, similar to a college fair, with lots of colored tablecloths, and then the vendors came in, and I think everyone who attended had a very positive experience.
It was a bit of a flash mob that day, as I recall.
It was. I don't have a copy of the video with me, though, but I think you can get it on the line.
It's on YouTube, I believe.
It has a lot of hits. This is under the wellness rock, too, would be the positive sign Thursday that they do here at the Nichols Middle School. In the morning, when the students get off the bus, an administrator meets a group of kids on Thursdays, and they tweet out a picture that day.
Yeah, we have lots of activities in the district that want to celebrate this, this culture, and, and as we move along here, you'll see activities in the gym promoting well-being amongst students. We keep moving here. Obviously, the early childhood center, we still have recess. There's a lot of, a lot of discussions out there in the world about recess. We still do have recess, and you can see we do it even in cold weather, but these kids are enjoying a recess. We also have a family resource center here in the district, which is a very important part of the culture of wellness with regard to how we handle families in need, and this is a great, great, as you met Megan Quirk a couple of weeks ago, and she's the director of our family resource center, and the, the amount of families and lives she touches through this Middleborough Resource Center, which is paid for through the Title I grant. And I'd hate to see transportation taken out of Title I and at the sacrifice of this, so it's Brian's point that was made earlier. So, this family resource center is a very important piece of the culture of well-being in our district and our town, really, as we move forward. Next, we go to the, the next rock is the culture of innovation and achievement. And you'll see on this that we have several areas that we've pointed out here, that at the elementary schools, we continue to add technology, and through the budget process, hopefully we'll be adding a little bit more. We have computer date-based testing in all of our MCAS 2.0 testing. Every child is now testing on the computer-based testing. We have discovery science tech books all the way up through now, from the elementary level through the middle. We have Renaissance Assessment, which is at the elementary level, which is basically a, a benchmarking system for student progress, and it allows myself to sit down with the administrators and talk about how individual classrooms and individual students are doing as we progress through the year. So, that's done on a regular basis. At the secondary level, we have our second year of our one-on-one initiative. Again, six, seven, eight, students get a tech, a tech book at the beginning of the day and go through the end of the day and return it, and it gets charged overnight. And at the, the upper level, the high school, students are allowed to take their, their little computer and take it back. computer and take it back and forth to school, and they have charging stations at the school, and obviously, folks are charging at home, too. Computer-based testing, again, MCAS 2.0, we're still doing some... still doing the old MCAS, the first-generation MCAS, the 10th grade, but that's changing as we move forward to FY19. Discovery science tech books, grades six through eight. Edge of task, Edge of Elastic, which is the interactive formative assessment new this year, and that's a new initiative that we put in place, again, for benchmarking. And we have some activity here with students on their laptops, students in a robotics class at the Nichols, students working in group structures, and some of those things that Dr. Gates was talking about, some of those new techniques that we want to put in place, and students, looks like they're having fun.
This is an after-school book club at the elementary school. They have a lot of activities there after school, funded by the PTA, which is great. The book fair visits every school in the district, so they have fun with that. And this week, we had our 100-day celebration at all the buildings. This is two little kindergartners.
Dressed as 100-year-olds.
Doing the morning announcements. They're sitting in the closet, reading their books with their...
Cubbies.
Cubbies, cubbies, okay. So there's just a lot of activity every day in every classroom, and...
So now we move on to the culture of excellence, and a lot of this includes the next slide, which includes some professional development opportunities. We have our Staff Strong program, with Dr. Gates does a three-day program in the summer, which prepares all of our educators, new educators, to Middleborough, for the Middleborough Experience, not just teaching, Middleborough teaching, which is important, and she does a real focus on that, which is great. Throughout the year, we have four full days of professional development, which is built into the educator agreement with the school committee and the town of Middleborough. We have six early release days, cut down from 12 in the past, but they are six still. One is tomorrow, as Brian, Mr. Givernoni intimated earlier. We have a Leslie University partnership with our elementary folks, which is an excellent program and has been going on now for the third year. Susan Looney Math, we have a Susan Looney, is a math consultant who comes in, has been working with our elementary folks, who's very, very well-received as part of our half-days. We have the Hill for Literacy, which is another group, similar to the Leslie University partnership, but this is a middle school partnership that has been done. As an administrative principal in Bridgewater, we worked with the Hill for Literacy, much like our elementary schools are working with Leslie, but we did it at the elementary with Hill. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed put a program together for a free program with Hill for Literacy, and we have several teachers from Nichols Middle School who attend workshops on a regular basis to bring that program back to our Nichols Middle School. Project-based learning in a digital age, we're moving towards that, moving towards more of that sort of cooperative work. We have Dr. Deborah Harris, who's a special ed consultant who works with inclusive practices, with our special ed administrators, regular ed, or gen ed, and working with those groups. We have special ed PDPs, we have Tech and ELL, we've sponsored that program in the past. We have our MHS Curriculum Leadership Team, which meets on a regular basis, and we have our District Emergency Response Team, which is really a great group of folks who actually met today to talk about what happened yesterday, so as we move forward. And that's a picture of the new educators last summer, who were going on a tour, which is arranged by Dr. Gates again, and she arranges with local businesses. We go around and do a tour, and we end up at Peaceful Meadows, and the great folks at Peaceful Meadows sponsor some ice cream at the end of the day. But this is our group of new teachers last year, and they enjoyed this tour, and I also went on that tour, and Dr. Gates went on the tour, and I think Sean Ceciliato might have come, because he... I know he was looking forward to the ice cream. More opportunities for teachers to engage with one another. I believe this is a picture of the Leslie group, working with each other. It's more of a train-the-trainer program, where our people are getting trained, so they can bring back to the schools and become Leslie trainers within our schools. More of that workshop after school, this is a group of educators, I believe, at the HBB, but it is a Susan Looney Math workshop, I believe, that was the last half-day, the last release day, so. And we have some district programs and some successes. We celebrate success, and we have our one-on-one devices, we have our program at Nichols Middle School, they have the ROR program, they also have the Tiger Tales, which are coming back, I believe. Advanced placement programs at the high school, athletics, after-school clubs, all schools, Rotary Raze, Rotary is very good to us, as you know, that we've celebrated their participation in our school system. We have some tangible results from that program that they run. We have after-school clubs that run as many as 20 or 30 clubs in the after-school at both MKG and HBB. We have after-school and Jamirots here at Nichols Middle School, and after-school programs here. The MEK does the bucket fillers. Obviously, we have social thinking and social competency skills, social-emotional learning programs, and obviously, Nichols Middle School, we showed a picture of that earlier, with the encouragement by the administrators to get those kids off the buses and really get them excited about a Thursday in school, doing positive signs. And it's actually caught on, and I think Mr. Gagin got it from another case, maybe Case High School somewhere, he borrowed it from Case High School in Swansea, and now he's used it, and then it spreads, and it spreads, and it spreads, it's all over Twitter. And if you look at Mr. Gagin's Twitter feed, there are people saying, "Hey, we're doing it now, we're doing it now," and the folks at Case. So it really has been a positive thing here at the school. We have a key club at the high school, does a great deal of work sponsoring and helping out, they do the Eat to Heat program. Obviously, our athletic program gives children, young people, an opportunity to be student athletes and keep them in grades up and championship team. And this is a drama program at the MKG recently, at their school, celebrating and having great fun, getting initiation on the stage, which is great, especially at that level. And students working in classrooms, getting reading awards. And this is our teacher, our ninja teacher, who became quite a role model for our school students last year, and continues to be, and actually went to the high school to a special program this year, the Century 21 Opportunity that Mr. Brandigan put together, and talked to our students, and was very well-received, as I recall, Mr. Brandigan. I did have a chance to hear some of her speech at the end about perseverance and never giving up and starting something new, because she didn't really start this until she was a little bit older, in her twenties. And she and her sister said, "Hey, we could probably do that," and so they started doing it. That is our American Ninja Warrior. So, the strategic plan, as I mentioned, is a living document. We have three subcommittees that are complete with eight or 10 administrators each. We can create action steps, we revisit action steps, we adjust them as we move along, we monitor them, and we are looking always at this document. We try to look at it at least once every month, if not twice every month, to try to figure out, as an administrative team, how we're doing, and do some checkups, and we're working on it, believe me. So, as we move on here.
And Mr. Lynch, that drives this budget. That's the key to this budget. That is what drives... that plan that is always morphing year to year, throughout the year, is what drives this budget that we've put together, or you guys have put together.
Absolutely. In addition to the strategic plan, there are several other budget drivers, which include contractual increases, which are there, special education tuitions and services, which change from year to year, as we know, and we have emerging and shifting student populations, including special ed out-of-district tuitions and ELL. We try to keep the out-of-district tuitions down as much as we can, but we... our ELL population is emerging. The numbers don't get lower, they get higher each year, the numbers get... and that's a program that we have, Mr. Cardoza, who's sat with me a week ago, and unfortunately, has basically... I don't know if I've received his letter yet, but he has a letter prepared for his resignation. And so he is somebody who's gonna be leaving that program, and that program, as Carolyn Lyons had mentioned earlier, is really gonna morph for next year, and really gonna require some additional attention. So we are looking at that through the budget process, and we will continue to do that. So the teachers have made... the administrators have made a great deal, a number of requests. Some of them will be honored, some of them will not be honored, but just to give you an idea, some of the requests that have come through, the high schools asked for a number of positions there, I don't need to read them all, but we need to look at all those programs and then prioritize them, and then determine what is wanted, what is needed, and what is essential. And right now, we're essential budgeting right now. We're getting less money from the town than we have to pay for our raises that we have, and we're gonna talk about that in a little bit. So we're looking at, you know, requests that we have to do with a zero impact on budget, or at least neutral impact on budget, if you will. Athletics asked for some positions, as you see. The Berklin wanted to add some folks, increase an instructional coach. Right now, the two buildings share one, and they are asking for one in each building. MKG asking for a teacher there. At the Early Childhood Center, asking for a special education teacher, again, an emerging population of students, three-years-old, presenting with non-typically developmental issues, and so we have to address that. They're looking for more secretary of help there, because we have parents that come in the summer and knock on the door, and there's not always somebody there to greet them and register their child, so we're looking at trying to address that situation as a district. Technology Department requested an additional technology integration specialist, with all the technology we have. The need has emerged, especially at the secondary level, for someone to help with teachers doing work in the classroom. Pupil Personnel Services, looking for a registered behavior technician, and to address some of the needs that were articulated by Carolyn Lyons in our subcommittee meetings. So the Budget Subcommittee will...
So, like I said, as a committee, it was decided that we would listen to the administrators, hear them out, but then not make any decisions or recommendations until a few more months into the school year, and see how things pan out, and wait until after the annual town meeting. But we are, of course, going to work with the town. We've been allocated $950,000 to increase our operating budget. It is a little short of what we need for our contractual increases right now, but we feel that we will have some retirements, and people... we will be able to hire newer folks that have some savings there, so.
One of the problems that we run into, you know, we're trying to comply with a budget that works for the town, and we understand that, and I think we all understand why Bob Noons pushes it earlier, because it makes sense. But, that being said, there are things that we don't have, and this may come up in a discussion for, for example, in the next contract round. Teachers don't have to give us a notice by a certain day if they're retiring. So while we believe there are six retirements coming down, only two people have given us letters to say... three people have given us letters to say retiring. So it's these type of things that, when we looked at the budget, we looked at the idea of, A, we could live within the $950,000 that the town wanted. B, we looked at the personnel recommendations, and there are some that we believe we'll be able to do, but we're not gonna... we're gonna have to revisit that in a little bit. Tonight is about the number that goes to the town meeting. And as Brian knows, what we tend to do, especially for newer people, is we hold a discussion about budget again closer to June, and that really aligns everything monetarily. And it also works for... we are... right now, we're three months away from there. So we have to look at... we're required by law to have a balanced budget, and we're also required by law to deal with everything that we know about. So whatever happens in the month of, you know, March, April, and May, we're gonna have to adjust our budget. We may not get six retirements, but we may get seven or eight retirements. You know, these things happen, and it doesn't make sense to work on. What we have looked at, and just so people know, is we've looked at taking areas in which we know immediately that they can be budget-neutral, and allow them. So for the athletic department, for instance, the athletic director has asked for a... what was the position? Can you go back?
Strength and conditioning.
Strength and conditioning coach. So while that's gonna be open to students who each season are athletes, we're gonna allow other students who haven't paid for strength and... who haven't paid for athletics to get in for a $25 fee in the years that they're not paying. And so that allows them... so for... if you have a student who, for example, only plays basketball and baseball, but doesn't do a spring sport, they can pay the $25 and work with the strength and conditioning coach. And so we think those amounts of money will be neutral, and we can work that out. Clearly, it's a... if you will, it's a gamble, but it's a gamble on small money. The same applies with the position here at Nichols, to move to a program for cross-country rather than a club. What we chose to do was, currently, the students who are in the club are paying $25 to be in the cross-country club. It did not make sense to us, given what the requirements of that position would be and the monetary, to move up to the full 150. 175 that we charge. So we talked about a $75 fee that would cover transportation, that would cover the pieces, and go from there, again, to try it and see how it works. So those are two areas that we've already discussed how to make them budget-neutral and move on from there. So those are areas that are included as we move forward.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
When you're talking about positions... One of the positions that Mr. Lynch just touched upon is that pre-K, that emerging pre-K demand, is that something that is... I don't know, maybe three, four years ago, we were talking about why we have troubles with some of our students on IEPs, passing the MCAS, and you can't change it in fifth, sixth, and... you need to start really early. And to me, that's when that pre-K, that's the earliest. Is that something that is gonna be, if not this year, next year, that we have to, you think?
I think you'll find, as we move through this process, that that has become an essential priority, not to tip the scales or give any additional information, and we're not keeping anything, but that is one of those areas that has to be addressed. And I would tell you that ELL is another area that has to be addressed. So some of these compliance issues and some of these, you know, we don't want to be out of compliance, and if we had another two or three, three-year-olds moving to town with special needs, then we'd have to hire a teacher right now. So we want a budget for it, for next year.
And that's the other thing, too, that I should point out, that I think is really important. When we sit down, we meet with the individual administrators. One of the great things that Carolyn does is, she's met with the principals beforehand, and so when we talk about the special needs population, her and the principals are working out together what are priorities and what aren't. And, you know, they become priorities for the district as a whole, not just... it isn't like, "I'd rather have this, I'd rather have that." It doesn't work that way here, and I think that's fantastic.
And the simple math of the retirement is, if we have six or seven teachers who've been here for a long time, who are at the end of their careers, they're generally around $80,000, high seventies, early eighties. We're hiring people at 45 to 50. So if you're talking about six teachers, you're talking about almost $200,000 in difference once we get those declared resignations. So that does make a difference in terms of what we're able to do as a committee, to provide for the school department, and also provide for, you know, some stability with regard to some other areas, including special ed tuitions, et cetera, so.
And some of the requests that, for example, that we know we won't be able to deal with, for example, the two elementary schools asked for additional position... additional teacher in grade two. That was the grade that we reduced the number... we reduced the number of teachers through retirement, but the population hadn't gone up and was really low. That population has remained the same. It's not gone up, and so the need, in our opinion, the need for another teacher in those areas doesn't... we can't justify, because that population has not increased. Again, if we were dealing with a population of a grade that we saw had a huge number in it, then we'd have that conversation.
Right, it's... those are the wants. We would like this. Then there's the, "We really need this," and then there's... this is essential for us to operate as a school. So that's, again, that's the level we're at with this budgeting situation.
So as Rich mentioned, we would consider the coaching positions, but offsetting it with fees. We'll continue to meet and review and discuss the requests, but a final recommendation to stay in line with the $950,000 allocation won't be made until after the annual town meeting, April 23rd.
And that, again, is our efforts to work within the balanced budget of the town. And that's, to me, you hear some towns that are asking for 6% and 7% for the educational budget. We could do that, but the reality is, we have to work within this number, and that's where we're at.
So what we're looking at for next year is our special ed increases for contracted services would be about $100,000, and the tuitions would be 434. Right now, working with the $950,000, our budget will be going up 3.1% from last year, and our transportation, it's been increased. and our transportation, it's been increased, 137,000, and 50,000 of that we've set aside for the foster, and, you know, when we built this, this was just beginning, so I don't even know, should we accept the mandate? I don't even know if it will be enough, but, you know, time will tell. So that will increase some 4.6%. We do, we will be in the third year of our minibus drivers' contract, so we're all set with those salaries. So this is how our operating budget breaks down. We are very labor-intensive. Human resources is our business. Our salary lines certainly are the most, and this is how it plays out on the pie. And this is the transportation. First student went up 3%, and then there's the 50,000 for foster care. Minibus salaries went up a little bit. We have several positions funded through grants, 19 of them, over a million dollars, so those are very, very important to us. And taking our 2016 end of the year...
Go back.
Sure. Oops.
We have five positions out of Title I fund, and that's important to note. This was the fund that Carolyn said that they told you to take the money out of. If we're taking money out of that fund, we're not having those five positions.
Right.
And that's why it's important.
So the 2016 per pupil expenditure is based on the information that's submitted at the end of the year. Again, the chart of accounts is how they figure this out, through the DESC. So the schools with the asterisks on the bottom are the schools that the DESC compares Middleborough to. The state average on the left there is 15,545, and Middleborough for 2016 was at 14,138.
And these last four or five slides, these important slides, are in this budget booklet? Okay, just so you have that, those four or five slides are in there, in living color. We have a number of capital projects that have gone on, as you know, that we want to just feature here just a little bit. At the elementary level, we have door entry, electronic entries, so that we're not putting rocks and doors for safety, and we're not, when the kids go out to recess, it's not a two-by-four or a doorstop in there, so that when the teachers come back in, so the door is secured and locked, and the teachers have their key code, which is on their ID, and they wave it in front of that box, and the door opens for five seconds, unlocks for five seconds, and then locks behind them as they come in with their classrooms. So we're adding those, and we continue to add those. There's another one, I think, going in at the MEK, and there's another one, where's it going? There's a second one he's adding, the complex, another one, second one at the complex, thank you. At the Early Childhood Center, as you know, we've finished the roof. We heard a lot about this roof over the last couple of years. The final piece was the cap on the chimney, which is a very tall chimney, and that had to be repointed, remorted and repointed, and the cap was put on, and some of the extra work that was done in the cupola, to avoid even after the roof was done, you know that we had some additional seepage with 50 mile an hour winds, et cetera, and we think we've discovered the issue, and, and it's been taken care of. So if you look at some of the numbers from this roof, there's the beautiful Early Childhood Center, which a lot of, some of the modern schools are being modeled after this type of school, this old look, which is very nice and colonial, and very attractive in the center of our town, it's a historic piece. And the roof for that, that's new slate roof on there, the slate frontage. The funds that were appropriated for that roof were 1.64257. The total expenditure on that program is 83261932, and basically what happens is, we save 331637 just on the job alone, because the bid came in so low, which was great, but then the total expenditure, again, was at 832619, and then the MSB reimbursed us for 460. So for the roof that we originally thought was gonna be almost 1.2 million, ended up costing 830, the taxpayers in Middleborough only had to pay 372042. A lot of money, but in terms of a big job and the big roof, that actually is fairly expensive in terms of our taxpayers and the cost that they incurred, and we were able to save a great deal of money on that, so. We had some work done down at the swimming pool, brand-new boiler, brand-new filter, filtration system, highly efficient, and is working extremely well, as everyone who swims in that pool can attest to. It regulates the temperature, and we have less issues with some of the humidity that was going on, and some of the tile issues that we were having, and some of the rust issues we're having, and so those are great. You know that we had a major program here at the John T. Nichols Middle School. We had a lot of discussion last year. Those are the new boilers in place, beautiful, gorgeous new boilers, modern system with the drainage in the back, and wonderfully working system that has been regulated, and has been through a testy winter here, and has come out fine. I think we'll see some great energy savings there. As we move forward to the Middleborough High School project coming up, you folks know some of the numbers, and this is the feasibility study alone, but we will, in the original town meeting, appropriate 1.4 million for the feasibility study, and the cost of that ultimately to taxpayers was 428,059. We were able to budget with some, with an OPM, and with a designer who came in lower than anticipated, and our original savings indicates that, and then the cost to the taxpayers was 428. Our original anticipated 1.4, and the total expense of 944, so.
And if I can talk about that for one second, just so everyone understands, you saved, essentially, the town, another $450,000. I want to point out to everybody that other towns will take that money and automatically roll it over and use it into the next design phase. We, we as a committee decided that wasn't what the town had voted for. The town had voted for the feasibility, to use that money in feasibility, and if, if you remember, when we went over the plan a while ago, the plan was shifted a month for submissions. That was part of the reason, because the groups that we're working with are, were used to committees saying, okay, start spending the 455,000, and we'll move on from there, but we had decided that that wasn't, that's not what the people of Middleborough voted for. So even though there, you know, we could have used the savings to continue, we decided not to, because that's, you know, that was our, our respect of their decision, and we, you know, we wanted to wait until the town voted completely to approve the design and new building, and we waited till then and moved on from there, so.
And you'll see some of the, this is an exterior elevation of proposed, the front of the new high school. It's gonna look a little different than this, but right now, that's, that's what it will mainly look like, as we move on here. And this is the, where we're at with the phasing. In March 2018, design development to the MSBA, I think that's been pushed up to early April. October 2018, the project will go out to bid. Spring 2019, the construction begins. January 2021, or that December-January calendar, the students, hopefully the class of 2021, will start the year in the current high school, and move to the new high school, so they'll graduate in 2021. And again, MHSbuildingproject.com, please get your updates on that website, and please stay in tune. I know many people do, and we appreciate that, but we have another meeting coming up on February 28th, which is our next general meeting, and at the selectman's office, and that will be, I believe, at 5 o'clock. I know it's gonna be at 5 o'clock, so. We've asked this year for some capital projects, and as you know, the Department of Energy Resources has designated us as a green community. As such, we have a $197,000 grant coming our way, and we have worked with the capital planning committee and the town manager, and determined that we're, we're destined for about $150,000 of that, and our plan is to, according to the audits that we've done, the best way we could save money is to replace all the interior lighting fixtures from the current T-12 fluorescent lights and ballast completely out, and replace it with LEDs. Hopefully, that work will be done over the summer. But this is still a proposal, and this has to go, this is, again, this is, the town manager has put this in the hands of the capital planning committee to make final decisions on, on where this 200,000 or so go. 197.8,000 will go, but we've already been told, we believe that we'll get about 150 of it. So it's our hope to get the entire complex done, but we'll get as much of it as we possibly can get done with that money, and then perhaps lie in the wait for next year's money to come in and put that project forward at that point. But we anticipate, and the numbers we've seen, the formulas we've seen, would indicate that within six or seven years, all of that money will be returned in the, in the manner of savings from energy, and the energy efficiency, so, which is great for the town and great for the school system. And now we get to the final recommendations in terms of the numbers.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move that the Middleborough School Committee approve $34,480,660 as the fiscal 2019 local education budget. Such appropriation includes $31,394,643 operating budget, and $3,086,017 transportation budget, and further, that the total appropriation of $34,480,660 is in compliance with the Education Reform Acts of 1993, and recommended by the superintendent of schools. And further, that the school committee direct the superintendent to allocate the following additional funding sources, which total $1,059,696 fiscal year 19, circuit breaker, special education reimbursement, $788,173, school tuition, school choice tuition, 200,000, preschool tuition, 42,000, facilities rental account, $29,523, and the final approved expenditures for the schools will be $35,543,56.
Just a chair here, a second.
Second.
Discussion. I would just like to say a couple of things. One is that, you know, this process is long and will continue, but it's a good process, and I am also thankful to the town side of it. There are many communities in the Commonwealth, especially where the town and school departments consistently bust heads and knock each other, and, and problem after problem occurs, and people don't understand. So I'm, I'm very proud of this committee in the sense that we have constantly maintained our funding within the towns' ask for parameters. I think, you know, if there was an emergency in the town, we needed something, I think we'd go to the town and ask for more money, because we're not constantly asking for more and more and more. And that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily mean that administrators get everything that they want. You know, administrators would like to do things differently, and you clearly saw from the personnel request that there are, these aren't things that are sort of frivolous or willy-nilly. These are, these are people asking for things for particular reasons, and we accept that. And thankfully, I think the other thing is, if you look at towns around the Commonwealth, we haven't been forced to lay off teachers or personnel. We've sort of worked within the idea of, of the, you know, when retirements come, being able to continue for retirements with, you know, with a change from a more senior staff member who makes an X amount of money to a newer staff member who makes a different amount of money. And so that, again, is the result of administration, sort of looking out for the dollars and everything like that. I think this is a good budget. This will create a good school system for next year. I think that the people in Middleborough should be proud, as we say over and over again. The other thing I'm proudest of is the amount of money that everybody here looks for outside of just public funds. Dr. Gates was here tonight to talk about grants that she found, and were able to use to, to improve and add to our educational system for our kids that are not, you know, you know, we would like to have the 35,000 from the town to have done that three years ago, but we, we recognize that can't happen, so we look for other ways to do it, and I think that's important to note. I mean, it's especially, I would especially say that things are a lot easier with Mr. Lynch and Kathy, because of the work that they do makes our lives easier. And Brian can attest to this. It was not long ago, I believe about, about six years ago, that this, that the previous school committee tried to go before the town for a $2 million override, and with the idea that they were gonna lay off 42 teachers across the district, and that we've moved radically away from that, and we've, you know, we've been able to live within a budget that I think makes sense for the town, because it's the number they give us, and makes sense for us as a community to have a good, solid educational system.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I wanna, I wanna echo what you just said about the, the ask. It was, it was seven years ago, because I remember, because that was the day I decided to run the school committee when they asked for $2.3 million. They didn't get $2.3 million, and it, it, there was a tough year in there. I know there was, but we had some changes that occurred. Kathy came on board. I know you started from a zero budget with Mr. Malone, and, I mean, found money everywhere you could, and I remember sitting here looking at 30 full-time equivalent positions being added one night. Getting our classroom sizes down from near 30 in the elementary level, down to 20. It took a couple of years, and not all grades, of course, but I watched that happen in the last six and a half years with Kathy, Mike, and, and now Brian, as part of, as part of this program, and then with Charlie Cristello, our town manager, and now Bob Noons, our town manager. They got it. They knew, they knew what they had to do to help get us through, because in the last, I don't know, four or five years, our increase from the state on a 17 and a half million dollar piece that they give us has been about $70,000. And, and that doesn't cover costs of, of, of just contractual obligations. So the town has been very nice to us. We've worked together with them, and the other thing we haven't done, and since I've been on this board, is we haven't asked for a special education piece, where we've gone to them and said, we need a little extra for special education. We've worked it in our budget. I mean, are we gonna this year, maybe?
We were close this year.
We were close. Well, we had some extraordinary costs, so, I mean, when you qualify for that February request, you know you've had a lot of costs. So working within the budget, working with, if we have a light, mild winter, we can offset some of those costs with some of that heating money, hopefully. So I'm just, I look at the financial strength of the community, what the, the Budget Subcommittee has done, all the administrators working together. That's why this budget works. I just, I, I look at the budget, and I've only voted for two budgets in six years. This, this will be my third, and the reason why is, it works. It's a balanced budget, it works, and I, when I went through it, I said, wow, man, you've made something out of something, 'cause it's difficult, and I see it, and I appreciate everything you guys did, all the meetings, and coming up with this number, and I'll stop gushing at this point.
I do want to point out two things. A couple of other things, too, that I think are important, and it's on that slide over there. If you want to look at, do we have a good, in this particular case in my mind, a high school, look at the school choice tuitions. You know, that's 5,000 a child. There are a number of kids, as we know, coming into our district to be a part of our district because they think it's a good district. There's kids who are staying for, you know, want to finish off their year, parents have moved, they want to be able to do it, but there's a lot of new, you know, one of the things that we did that was never allowed before, like, this, you know, this committee had sort of stayed away from school choice. And I, I think it's been helpful, and it, you know, we haven't had loads of students that have overrun us and caused us problems. We've had good students who wanted to be here and be a part of it, and add it, and we've been able to, as you can see there, take $200,000 and place it in the schools that is the betterment of all our kids, whether they are from Middleborough or not. The second thing we do not do is, is in my mind, we do not nickel-and-dime families. There are many communities that charge for transportation. There are many communities that if you want to be in a school play, you have to pay a certain amount of money. We don't do that.
Full day kindergarten.
Right. We, we do not do that. And finally, one of the groups I think we have to thank over and over again is our employees. We have worked consistently to maintain reasonable wages across the board, and in the past, for example, they've, they've accepted a 2% raise. That's fantastic, and that is not, without sometimes us butting their heads, but there is not a huge dynamic of negativity with our staff about contractual times. They, I think we're open with that process, and they understand what we have and what we don't have, and we can have those conversations, and so I'm thankful for them, too. Other questions or comments?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Please.
I know this is a school committee discussion, but I just want to add the fact that the state requires Middleborough to pay $33,903,000, and requires schools... requires Middleborough to pay $33,903,000 in required school spending. If you look at our numbers before you tonight, that's considerably more than that, half a million dollars more in the, in the original ask. That's considerable. Many towns, they get, what's required goes to the school department, and that's what's required, and we're beyond that, which is good, so we're thankful for that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Hearing, the motion on the floor, as read by Brian, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. With that, the chair will close tonight's budget hearing. Does anyone have any questions or comments? We're back in our regular meeting before we start, before we end. The next committee meeting will be Thursday, March 1st at 7:00. With that, the chair will stand a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Go ahead, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.